We all good?
Yep.
Okay. What do I do, bang the gavel first?
Yes.
Call to order this special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, August 2nd, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Here.
Copeland?
Here.
Dodman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers, Hausmann, Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
And Guonce.
Here. Counselor Copeland, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Thank you, Dominic. Shall we move right into our agenda, Ms. Kent?
Sure.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve three sets of minutes. The first, from a special city council budget, finance, and property and committee of the whole meeting, which was held on June 15th, 2021. The next, from our special city council meeting held June 23rd, 2021. And finally, our special city council meeting, June 28th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And what do I do? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are seven, seven to zero. Thank you so much. Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order number 139. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $180 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Rail, and Transit Division for the Council on Aging to place employment advertising on diversity.com. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. And Director of Grants, Catherine Barrett, is here. Do you want to just say one thing general? Obviously, no grant is too small for the city of Beverly that you find.
Thank you, Council President. That's correct. No grant is too small. And the Council on Aging received this grant from Mass. EOT to expand our hiring outlets a little bit broader than we've done in the past. And so, we were thrilled to receive it, and the ad ran.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate whatever we get. That's great. I would entertain a motion to... No? Oh, we do? No, we can't do these on the floor?
You can if you want.
I can, sure.
Yeah, it's easier for me.
I'd entertain a motion to approve that grant.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven to zero. I like that idea better.
Much easier, me too.
Okay, thank you.
Order number 140. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly was awarded a Massachusetts Department of Mental Health Jail Arrest Divergent Program grant to hire two coresponder clinicians to support the Beverly Police Department Community Impact Unit. The grant is for $180,000 for a one-year period. The city previously had a three-year jail arrest diversion grant for one coresponder clinician for $90,000. Due to the success of the original jail arrest diversion program, the grant is being expended to include a second responder. Specifically, this grant funding will be used to fund the coresponder clinician positions at assist police staff on calls for individuals who need mental health and/or substance use support. The Jail Arrest Divergent Program Grant is a regional collaborative effort between the Beverly, Essex, Gloucester, Ipswich, Manchester, and Rockport Police Departments. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, donation, earmark, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Barrett, words of wisdom, please.
Thanks, Council President. So, this jail arrest diversion program, the grant we previously had was for a three-year term, and it's been a huge success. And I just want to say thank you to Chief LaLasher, Sergeant Dave Costa, and our coresponder clinician, Lisa Macario. Because of the success of the program, we're now doing a second grant and adding a second clinician, which is phenomenal. The need for this program, which diverts people from the emergency room or incarceration into some treatment and programming, has gone up dramatically during the pandemic. And so, we are adding a second clinician, and it's just been really a very big success. So, thank you to all those involved. And I'm very involved in this grant as well. And it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or comments? Counselor Ames?
First. Great job. Nice work. When you say a clinician, is this a social worker type person?
They call them a coresponder clinician. It is like a social worker. They are embedded with the police departments, and they go on calls and try to guide the people who need help into programming so that they're not... The police aren't seeing them again and bringing them to the emergency room, which is very costly. So, the program actually saves a lot of money because they're getting people into treatment programs for both substance use and mental health issues.
No, thank you very much. I think this is great. And just on a side note, I was speaking with the mayor of Framingham last week, and they have a... They've embedded a social worker who works for the Health Department in the Fire Department to deal with people who are hoarding.
Oh, okay.
And it's been tremendously successful. And just when you... You know, and the mayor can agree. I mean, every instance just about of where we have pest control issues, there's been, in the vicinity, a house that's in tough shape where someone is hoarding.
Yep.
And so, I just would put that on your radar screen as something moving forward that could be really helpful, because I think these programs are so proactive and very important.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. I would love to reach out to Framingham and ask them if they have... If that's a grant-funded position. And I certainly know there are some hoarding issues in Beverly as well, so I think the city could benefit from that.
Sure. I can put you in contact with Mayor Spicer, for sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. Anybody else? Counselor Rand?
Thank you. I'm just curious, is this the program that in the past, the coresponder is split amongst the kind of grant-y communities?
Yes. So, right now, we currently, under the three-year grant, we had one coresponder clinician that was serving all six communities noted in the letter. And she was stretched very thin. The largest demand community was Beverly. The second was Gloucester. And then, I think, the third was Ipswich. And what is going to happen with the second grant, which is a one-year term, is that one clinician will be devoted to Beverly and Ipswich, and the other clinician will be devoted to Gloucester, Manchester, Essex, and Rockport. So, the number of calls and the number of follow-ups, which can be multiple to help people, was pretty significant. And with COVID, it just spiked to a significant level where one clinician was not enough. So, the Department of Mental Health saw that the demand and the need for it, and they doubled the grant so we could add a second coresponder clinician.
Thank you. One more follow-up question?
First.
Thank you. So, just out of curiosity, the grant is for $180,000. Is that just sort of our portion of the grant, or are we the lead on the grant?
Beverly is the lead on the grant, so I actually manage all the financials on the grant. And it's a little bit complicated on the back end, because we get billed from Leahy Behavioral Health, who we partner with for the clinicians. And then, we in turn bill the Department of Mental Health, who has awarded us the grant. But it's a reimbursement grant. So, it's a little complicated. And from the beginning, I said I didn't mind doing the compliance on the grant to make sure. There were a lot of moving parts. It wasn't your typical straightforward grant that the money's awarded, you spend it, you do a report. So... But it's worked very well. We have an excellent team.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven to zero.
Order number 141. Dear Honorable City Council, enclosed please find a proposed order seeking authorization to enter into a reciprocal easement agreement with Briscoe Village LLC in connection with the city's sale of the former Briscoe Middle School to Briscoe Village. Order number 40 of 2020 authorized the city to execute a purchase and sales agreement with Briscoe Village. By order number 110 of 2020, the city council granted Briscoe Village a special permit allowing the residential reuse of a former public building. Both the PNS and the special permit specifically contemplated the parties granting the reciprocal easements of the subject matter of this request. By virtue of the reciprocal agreement, the city will grant Briscoe Village, among other things, an easement to access to the lot from Sawyer Road, an easement over remaining city property during construction, an easement to construct and seasonally maintain the turf bowl, and an easement to maintain surface... Certain surface parking encroachments onto Sawyer Road that have historically exited. And Briscoe Village will grant the city the use of 10 shared parking spaces in the Briscoe Village parking lot for use to access the nearby city field. A copy of the reciprocal easement agreement is included with the proposed order. I respectfully request that you take action on this request at your August 2nd, 2021 meeting. Please do not hesitate to con me. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Let's refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have, you know, it's Award Three project, and I just... I have a bunch of questions just on parking and impacts on the neighborhood. So, when this does come up...
That's why we refer it to committee.
No, that's great.
Okay?
I just want to let them know.
We're good.
Order number 142. Dear Honorable City Council, I'm pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a donation of 35 child passenger car seats from the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and Office of Grant and Research Car Seat Distribution Program. This donation will be used to provide disadvantaged family with child passenger car seats in coordination with the Beverly Fire Department's Child Passenger Safety Checkpoint Program. Firefighters especially trained to install and check car seats to ensure they are properly secured and children are transported in vehicle safety. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this donation at your upcoming meeting on Monday, August 2nd. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And Fire Chief Carter is here. Yeah, Carter, right? How about O'Connor is here? First time live in city council chambers is the chief, right?
I do believe it is, Council President.
Yeah, welcome. Oh, yeah, we did the budget in council chambers, didn't we? I know, it was so long ago.
I know.
Well, welcome back.
I didn't have to stand here that night, though.
Okay.
It won't count. But thank you. Glad to be here. So, Lieutenant Kryling, Fire Prevention Officer, is our child passenger safety technician. He's the one that installs all the car seats, and he worked very hard. He works very hard to get a lot of opportunities, and this is one of the grants that he got. So, we're happy to get the 35 seats. He uses those in conjunction with a bunch of other agencies to make sure that they get into the right hands. So...
Perfect.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Counselor Rand?
Thank you. I just have one question. Do you work with the local WIC office?
Yes. So, Lieutenant Kryling has built a network. It's actually really cool to see him do this, because years ago, when we started this, it was a much, much different effort. And I'm not sure that the seats that we gave out at the time always made it to the right places, because we often advertised that we had seats, and just anybody would come just kind of take seats. It wasn't as beneficial, I think, as this current program is. He's done a tremendous job with it.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would entertain a motion to accept the donation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Chief O'Connor.
Order number 143. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $12,606,097 in American Rescue Plan Act grant funds from the Massachusetts Executive Office for Administration and Finance. ARPA funds are awarded to help states, countries, cities, and tribal governments cover increased expenditures, replenish lost revenue, and mitigate economic harm from the COVID-19 pandemic. Beverly anticipates receiving ARPA funding through various installments. Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on August 2nd, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I'll open up the floor to either Ms. Barrett or Mayor Cahill, I'm sure, wants to talk about this one. Thank you, Mayor Cahill.
Thanks, Mr. President. Happy summer. It's good to see you all. Hope you've had some good times in the last few weeks to get away. So, here are just a few thoughts for you about this, the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds. This is obviously an incredibly unique time, and these grant funds represent a unique opportunity, one that none of us remember having happened before and won't likely happen again in terms of the federal commitment of dollars directly to cities and towns. So, since it became clear that this was going to happen, we pulled together a team of department heads from across the administration and key support staff who've been working with me for some time now on this initiative. I understand that you, my colleagues in local government here, as well as the community at large, need to be part of the discussion as we work through the process of setting priorities for use of the grant. And in terms of the request before you tonight, we, and by this, I mean the team that's been working on this, believe that it can work for you to vote and accept... Vote to accept and authorize expenditure of the grant tonight, if that's your desire. It can also work for you to take that vote at a future meeting. So, in the context of the decision that you'll be making at some point, whether it be tonight or later, I want you to know that from the time it became clear this grant was going to happen, it's been our intent to do the following. One, work with U.S. Treasury, Massachusetts Administration and Finance Team, as well as through our several networks, including planning, public health, finance, legal, my own networks through Mass. Municipal and others, to educate ourselves regarding the eligible categories of expenditures, and to talk and discuss with colleagues in other communities and throughout the state as to what people are seeing. So, that's been ongoing for some time. Two, work through that process and work to identify, both based on the eligibility and on our look internally, identify administration priorities, given our understanding and knowledge of the needs of the community and of the impacts being felt by COVID. Now, all this is being done in preparation for the next step of meetings with you city councilors, as we understand the importance of your perspectives and your advocacy for all our residents and businesses. So, I think you've all seen that we're looking to try to start those meetings the week of August 16th. And once those steps happen, and we've had the chance to look at all this together, we plan to hold a community meeting and invite community members to share their perspectives on COVID's impacts here in Beverly, where the critical needs are, and how we might best address these. So, it's really, you know, from the start, the intention has been acknowledging, as I said, the uniqueness of this whole dynamic, to try to work through really a robust process to figure out where to head with, you know, with these expenditures. So, all of this process, we anticipate, will help shape our administration's response and our decisions moving forward. And given... Well, the last point on that is our goal is to conduct this process over the next several weeks. And since the ARPA funds can actually be expended over several years, there are a couple of dates, and I'm still working hard to fully understand the second of them. The first is that we have through December 31st of 2024 to expend funds, so that's three and a half years roughly from now. And then, there's a later date on... And I'm not... I'm kind of tossing this one. There's a later date of the end of 2026 on some of the capital work, but I'm not sure the... Can you quickly, easily make that clear, Mr. Els? Because I don't want to leave people with the wrong impression of it. Let me just end, and if you want to just kind of clarify that. So, there are two dates. It's end of '24 and end of '26. But given that, you know, that the funds will be able to be expended over several years, as opposed to, you know, I don't think anybody's looking to spend them all at once. We expect that the conversations that we're having now and that we'll have in the coming weeks will be revisited and really will continue throughout the course of the life of the grant. Mr. Els, I don't know. It's okay. That's fine. So, we'll just stick with the end of '24 for the... It's either the full expenditure or the encumbrance. And we're still working through with Treasury and A&amp;F that later date of '26 that we've seen in some places. So, I hope that's helpful just in terms of context. And as you know, Ms. Barrett's here, as is Ms. Win, our planning director. Mr. Els, the finance director, and the solicitor is available for any questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the council? Counselor Copeland?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just a question, as far as if we say yea or nay tonight, what does that mean? Does that... If we say yea, does that mean we're just accepting the money until we decide what's going to happen with it? Or does it mean we accept the money, you can do whatever you want with it at this point?
No. So, I think I'm going to ask the solicitor to give you the official word on that. But the acceptance... The vote would be to accept the money and approve the administration's expenditure of it. Right? So, the commitment that I'm making, that you're... Some of you probably hearing for the first time, but as I said, this is how we've been anticipating working through it from the start, is that this really, you know, needs kind of a full conversation embedding of, you know, where we all see the challenges are and the opportunities are, and that we'll utilize that, try to help, you know, take what we are seeing as some opportunities and some needs, and kind of make them... Have them be fuller, more fully kind of understood by all of us, and that'll help shape where we go with it. So, it's not a dynamic where the council will be looking kind of line-by-line kind of way, or expenditure-by-expension kind of way. If that's helpful to understand.
Yeah, I just want to have a better idea, because right now, I don't think we all have a kind of a full understanding of how those funds would be dispersed if we said yea. So, I just want to have that understanding. If we're saying yea, we're saying okay. Also, it's a disbursement of...
When I say it's unique, you know, this, as I said, this has not happened before, right? This is the federal government recognizing through a lot of advocacy from the very local up through the state to the national level, a whole lot of folks, that cities and towns need this opportunity, this ability. Most of the grants that we receive, we all understand, you know, we apply for them for specific purposes, and when they come in, we all understand what they'll be spent on. So, I think that's an easier... It's easier to kind of to really to fully see what you're voting when you vote to accept and approve expenditure. Here, it's a set of broad categories of eligible expenditures. It's meant to be both circumscribed, right? I mean, you can't spend it on anything, but flexible within those areas. So, Madam Solicitor, do you want to add anything to that? Did you hear Counselor's question initially?
So, this is a formula grant?
Yeah, you need to come here.
So, this is a formula grant as opposed to a competitive grant, and if... This is a request to approve expenditure of the grant. So, if you vote to approve expenditure tonight, then that is approval of the mayor going forward with programs that are qualifying programs under ARPA.
And Ms. Williams, the mayor pointed it out right away. It seems fairly simple. We accept the grant, and then there's going to be a public process, and the mayor, it sounds like he wants to hear from everybody in the community before we make any decisions on where that money would be spent.
I mean, I don't... Legally, if you approve tonight, there is not another step in which the administration has to receive council approval for the expenditure of the grant.
Right.
Thanks, Madam Solicitor. And, Mr. President, I think to your point, as I said, it's such a unique opportunity, and it's meaningful dollars. I mean, you know, they can't do everything, but they're real and they're meaningful. We fully recognize that there needs to be a lot of input here, right? And so, that's why we're, you know, we're looking to embrace that opportunity, to meet with you folks individually and in groups, and then go out from there, with us having kind of, you know, fleshed through it some together, to the community for more input. And then, you know, we'll... We, as an administration, and, you know, I will say this, having been doing this now for going on eight years, no one of us, you know, just get to call any of these shots. There are things that, along the way, I might look at as a priority, that I'm disabused of the notion of it being a good idea by any one of the department heads, you know, and/or any one of you. So, it really is a process that we're looking to undertake in good faith and be mindful of the fact that, you know, in our case, the seven of you, your two colleagues who aren't here, me, we're all elected to represent, you know, our constituents, our residents, our business owners. In the case of our department heads and other staff who are working on this, you know, they're all entrusted, just as we are, with the best interest of the community. So, we're all working in good faith to our best abilities here. And I do look forward to the conversations, which, again, I don't think they're going to be, you know, I don't believe there'll be a one-time set of conversations. I think it'll help us set the course. And then, as the finance director reminded me yesterday, you know, we would not lay out any kind of a comprehensive plan of expenditures out of the gates, because we don't know what might show itself in the coming months, year from now, that we didn't anticipate. So, this is in setting, really setting the priorities thematically and beginning to start to, you know, to make the investments that we think... And I say "we" collectively, even though, you know, we may all discuss this, and one or two people might want to go in a certain direction and others in another, I think it's all about finding that right formula of investments that are going to really help people, businesses, the community, all in all.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Counselor Rotundo first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, a couple of things. Just, obviously, it's a three-year grant. We have two-year terms. So, what we're voting on to expend today, or if we do vote whenever, is there a long-term goal with the funds? As well as... I mean, short-term, right now, we want to, you know, stop whatever we can right now. But there is also some long-term, as you just said. And then, the other thing is, obviously, one of the things that I know a couple of my colleagues have said is, you know, a simplified method of getting it on our website, maybe a bar graph or a pie graph to show how the money's being expended. We had 10 buckets that we're saying we're going to use the money for. And I'm not asking specifically, but is that something we could consider? I know it's manpower to physically put it on a website and stuff, but at least for that matters. It's a... I mean, $12 million is almost 10% of our total budget. It's a large chunk of change. And so, is it something that we could consider going forward at some point to have something that would be able to be uploaded on the website and continually monitored so that people, the everyday citizen, can go on and click on and say, "Oh, okay, $200,000 went to PPP money, you know, overtime for this," whatever the case may be, or went to some, you know, profit, nonprofit charities that are able to fund their programs. Is that something that could be considered going forward with this? You know, again, like since a three-year, possibly a little longer, money to be expended?
Mm-hmm. I'm just thinking about what we do, what we can do. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know, we're... We could... We can certainly look at eligible areas and identify them as priorities for significant expenditure upfront, or should I say, as that becomes clear, in terms of what is spent, as it's spent, and after it's spent, so people can look and see how it has been spent. I don't see that being problematic. So, the finance director's nodding, saying, "Yes, we can do it." So, yes, I think that's... If your question is, "Will we do it?" Finance director's saying, "We will do it." So, we'll make sure it happens in that way. But as I said, until different sums are spent, they haven't been spent, right? So, I think it's... We can lay out priorities. First thing we can do is we can make it easy for people to see what the U.S. Treasury has deemed to be the eligible categories, right? And try to make that as easy to see as possible. And then, as we work through the process of identifying where amongst those categories do we agree we should be making investments, then the next step after that is in what percentages or amounts. That, I think, will come as we go over time. So, we'll do the best we can with sharing it, absolutely. And once it's expended, it's certainly easy to show that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Counsel Flaherty, then Counselor Rand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify the process. For people that have a good understanding, it's different than the budget process. For the most part, I appreciate what you're doing, bringing the community and the city council involved in this process, but ultimately, the responsibility falls with your office. I mean, you don't necessarily have to go out to the public, what have you. I mean, I think it makes sense to do that, but ultimately, you're not coming back to what's saying, "I'm going to spend $3 million here, $5 million here." Ultimately, the responsibility is with your office, and you are basically getting the input from the council and from the community, correct?
Yeah. I mean, as we read it and as we understand it, there's no requirement for that process that you just outlined of, you know, coming like... that process that you just outlined of, you know, coming like we would with the budget, with the operating budget, with the capital expenditure. I mean, look, the reality is, this is our community, right? And so it only makes sense that we spend the time together to sort through it. It doesn't mean that everybody, either any, all of us are going to be happy with every expenditure. It doesn't mean every member of the public will be, but that's never the case anyway. If there are 43,000 opinions on something that, you know, so we work the best we can. We all have been elected as representatives of the people who live here and vote here. As I said, our fantastic team of leaders within the, within city government are all doing outstanding work. So, yeah, it's a process, we're going to undergo the process that we, we're going to undergo a process that we hope will be robust and give us lots of good input and, you know, some good back and forth in terms of vetting and tugging at some of these possibilities. Because we all want to do what's right with it, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Rand.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mayor, and working through this order with us. I wanted to ask just realistically, it sounds like you're saying we could, you know, we could vote on this tonight, or we could vote on it on a future meeting. And I appreciate that flexibility, but I just want to know a little bit more about kind of timeline realistically. When do you anticipate being prepared to make your first expenditures from a grant, this grant?
Yeah. So I'm hearing a couple of questions, so I'll try to answer them in the order I understood hearing them. In terms of you folks, if your comfort level is not there to vote tonight, I think if your comfort level involves wanting to see this process unfold and see the, you know, the back and forth and the input and the conversation, my hope is that if we're able to have these conversations together the week of the 16th and starting with that week, my hope is that soon after Labor Day, we'll have been able to schedule a community meeting to have some great input in that. You know, if that process is one you want to see unfold first, my goal then would be by your second September meeting, that you'd have seen all that and you might have that comfort level. I can tell you that there are a couple of, you know, things that we've been looking through in terms of whether, you know, we might expend money in the meantime, and that it doesn't have to happen that way certainly. There may be priorities that any one or more than one of you folks have that you'd like to see discussed sooner than that and potentially freed up to be spent sooner than that. So I think those are the, some of the considerations in looking at whether to vote now or whether to vote later. You know, I'm, I think it can work either way. I think if, you know, if that vote ultimately is an approval to accept and approve expenditure, that if it happens sometime in the month of September, we can work with that, for sure.
Counsel Ames.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really encouraged to hear this community conversation effort that you're putting forward. I think also to put online the, in detail, the dollars that were spent in 2020, the COVID money would also be a great step. And I know it's probably complicated. In the back of my head, I don't know too much about this yet, but in the back of my mind, I've been thinking maybe the HVAC system for the library, which is in the capital plan, may be a candidate for some of this funding, which needs to be done anyway, but that also frees up some capital funding, money to ship this way. So I can imagine that it's pretty complicated. I can tell you that I think there would be tremendous value in holding off on this vote, first because we're not all here, and like you said, this is an unprecedented time. Secondly, while I appreciate all the work that your administration and you have been doing on this, I think it would give the community and this council a little time just to catch up. And I think there would be value in that, and there would be tremendous value to come together in September and really have a community plan, even if it were a plan of values, a plan of goals, a plan that was not hard in stone, but a community plan to move forward with these dollars. I think that that, for me, would make tremendous sense, and as you said, we're all part of this community, and it would move us together.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Counsel. I think those are really good points. You know, I put in the letter that I sent you about tonight, asking you folks to vote this evening, but as I said, if it makes more sense to you folks that some of this, sum to all of this process I'm talking about happens first, then that works as well, obviously.
Anybody else? So it sounds like the will of the council may be to wait on this. So I'll just refer, I mean, I don't have a problem voting on it this evening, but Counsel Ames did make some good points, and we're going to accept the money anyway. But if you're comfortable waiting, we'll just refer this to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you all.
Order number 144. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been given $250,000 unrestricted grant donation to benefit of the Parks and Recreation Department. This generous donation to the Parks and Recreation Department will be used as agreed upon with the donors for improvements and programs at Lynch Park. In addition, the donors have purchased two view finder machines to be located at Woodbury Point at the David S. Lynch Park in Beverly. The plaque will note that the view finder machines are dedicated to the Jean Cunningham lookout at Woodbury Point. The donors have respectfully asked to remain anonymous. We have been working with the donor family and anonymous philanthropy since September of 2020 to negotiate this generous donation. After meeting with representatives from anonymous philanthropy, we decided that a viewing agree at Woodbury Point would provide a great benefit to Lynch Park visitors and would be a wonderful tribute to Mrs. Cunningham, who loved bringing her grandchildren to Lynch Park, enjoy the open space and views of the great park. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on August 2, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Barrett, or should we go right to Mr. Doig?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Bruce Doig because he has been shepherding and cultivating this very large donation for almost a year now, so I'm going to hand it off to Bruce and say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Mr. Doig.
Thank you very much. The letter said it all. It is a very nice tribute to a woman who brought her children to Lynch Park. She had a twin sister who lives in, very close to Lynch Park, and, you know, the kids love going there, she loved going there, and when she passed a year or so ago, the family thought this would be a great tribute to donate to Lynch Park. So $250,000 is a very generous sum, and, you know, we have a lot of things going on down there, programming and necessary improvements, so it's something that we're, would certainly be able to utilize.
Thank you, Mr. Doig. Any questions from members of the council? Go ahead. Counsel Ames.
Just, so this is great. This is specifically targeted for Lynch?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Copeland.
All right, so I just want to make sure I have it clear. So this money was donated from a family specifically for something to memorialize one of their family members, or in that category?
Right, I mean, we have memorial benches, memorial, you know, plaques for other things, and this was, again, a significant donation, well above, you know, people pay $2,500 for a bench, and this is $250,000. So again, what it's going to be is two view finders, which, you know, we thought about how, we talked about naming rights for the, you know, areas of the park or the carriage house, and they really were just interested in doing something simple. And so the two view finders where people can look out at Marblehead or up the river or out to the islands, and, you know, small six-by-six or eight-by-eight plaque with her name, and again, talking about her bringing her grandchildren to the park. So, you know, we thought it's not going to be a big, large thing, it's not going to obstruct views. They're paying for the view finders and the plaque as well, which they're not cheap, you know, view finders, they're very expensive. So again, we thought it was a great tribute to a woman who loved Lynch Park, and again, people will benefit for years by being able to look out at the water and, you know, see the islands and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Doig. Anybody else? Counsel Rand.
Thank you, very quickly. Just wondering if you've connected at all with the Harbor Management Authority, because we've been talking about view finders as well. So if you haven't...
I have not, but I can certainly, you know, talk with them. We've been talking about the Harbor Fest and things, so I can certainly reconnect with them.
Yeah, if you haven't, they've done quite a bit, we've done quite a bit of research on different view finders and things like that. So that might be a good lead if you haven't already done that work, so.
Yeah, they've already, we have them, they're in the carriage house, ready to go.
Okay.
The view finders were shipped a couple of months ago, actually, and the plaque just arrived last week, so we're ready to go as soon as everything's signed and sealed, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rand. I would entertain a motion to accept the donation.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. I'm only pausing because I really want to say roll call. I mean, it's tough. We did that for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Communications, some other city officers.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Communication, some other city offices and boards.
Order number 146 from Counsel Flowers, fourth quarter summary from the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee of the Beverly School Committee.
I would entertain a motion to say thank, thank you to Counsel Flowers, and receive that and place it on file.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 147 from National Grid for Plan Number 3045117 for Railroad Ave.
I'd entertain a motion to set a public hearing for that, and we'll make the date September 13th and the time at 7:15.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
Order number 148 from National Grid for Plan Number 30405117 for Park Street.
And I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for the 13th of September at 7:25.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
Order number 149, communication from Department of Public Utility in Massachusetts, notice of filing public hearing procedural conference and request for comments.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
In favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Shall we do motions and orders before we go to committee?
Yeah.
So let's go to motions and orders, and I know Ms. Nguyen is excited to do that.
Order number 136-2021, be retained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. Proposed order amending Beverly ordinances, Section 113-2, possession or consumption of alcohol in public ways and public places or in private property by amending C as set forth below. 113-2, possession of consumption on public ways and public places or on private property, notwithstanding Paragraph A, Beverly restaurants may be allowed to operate and serve alcohol on city sidewalks, in parklets, parking spaces, public ways, or in other public space, but only upon approval by the Health Department, Municipal Inspection Department, Planning Department, and Public Safety in accordance with the standards established by the Planning Department. As such use is further subject to review and approval by the Licensing Board, including conditions imposed by such board, this paragraph C shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of... That's it? You don't want me to read the red?
Okay.
Do I need to read what you put in red? No.
Oh, no, we changed the name. No, not from red. Yeah, we do.
Ms. Nguyen, before we ask for final passage, do you have anything to add?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't. Unless you have questions.
Okay.
It's allowing it to extend, it's allowing outdoor dining, I mean, we talked about it last meeting, but that was a while ago in summer.
It's final passage, it was in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Right, so we're good to go. All right, that's fine.
Basically allows outdoor dining to extend to align with the state's extension until next April.
All right, so question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. It took me a few minutes to remember that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And let's go to order number 137.
Order 137, 2021, be retained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. Proposed order amending Beverly ordinance, Section 192-61, sandwich board signs by the amending Paragraph E as set forth below. 192-61, sandwich board signs, notwithstanding Paragrafts A through D, sandwich board signs may be displayed without a permit issued by the City Council, but only upon approval by the Municipal Inspections and Planning Departments in accordance with standards established by the Planning Department. This Paragraph E shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of April 1, 2022, and this was in the newspaper on July 2, 2021, and today is the final passage.
Great. Ms. Nguyen, you're good with this one also? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. So now we have to break for some committee work.
I think just what we have for legal.
For legal, okay, so the Committee on Legal Affairs needs to meet, and the councils that are on legal affairs, it's been so long since we met in committees, are Counsel Feldman and Counsel Copeland. So why don't you guys, Dominic, are you more comfortable staying there, or do you want to come up here?
I'm fine here if that's...
Okay. So Counsel Feldman, you don't have a problem chairing the meeting?
No.
Okay. And call to order Committee on Legal Affairs and then the Committee of the whole.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to call the order, yeah, 749.
Yeah, you're going to swing the camera that way. Great.
All we have is these two things. They can file and hold this if you want. Okay. So I'm just going to go. Okay. This is what we did tonight.
Like, call to order the Committee on Legal Affairs. Do I get that first and then the Committee of the Hall? And then Committee of the Hall. Counselor Houseman?
Call the Committee of the Hall.
And the Committee of the Hall.
So committee...
Okay, okay. So.
So order number 120, you can start with.
All right.
Briscoe. For Briscoe, right? Yep.
Relating to, this is relating to the communication from Counselor Copeland regarding the marijuana dispensary licenses. This was introduced at council on June 7, 2021, and referred to legal affairs. This was, and, so, we can, we'd like, I'd like to recommend that we receive the motion and place it on file. Do I have a...
Motion.
A motion?
So what happens if we receive it, place it on file? What, are we still able to move forward in conversations with it, or what happens at that point?
I mean, it just sits in the city clerk's office. It always can come back. The only way something dies in committee is if you vote no further action. So if there's a point in the future you'd like to reintroduce it to the discussion, it's very simple to do.
Okay.
Because we don't have an actual, like, order action item from it, so, so, yes.
Yeah, we just talked about several different things to do, but we didn't come with a conclusion yet.
Or we can, or we can hold it.
Or you can leave it.
Or we can hold it, and just, which kind of effectively does the same.
Not really. I mean, it's bad, I mean, if you're receiving, place something on file, you get busy and it kind of gets swept under the rug, but I mean, it's always there. Whereas the discussion, especially with dispensaries, really hasn't happened here in the city of Beverly yet. You could hold that. That way it's there, it's front and center, and, you know, we can talk about it in the fall.
Okay.
Yes, I make a motion to hold it.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
I'll second the motion. Can I second this? Okay. Second, and all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we also have...
That was, I believe, discussed, the rodent.
Okay, the...
I don't think they have a...
Late-file order number 134A, that was referred by Counselor Houseman regarding rodent infestation issues and advice letter to the city solicitor. I'd like to have a motion to receive the letter and place it on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second motion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
This is what became tonight.
Okay. Okay. So with this one back, we're going to want to refer this to the-
This is the one that came on tonight.
Right, and Ms. Williams, the city solicitor, is here to talk about that.
Answer any questions.
Okay. I should probably wait until we're all back, the Committee on the Whole.
You can, you can hear from Ms. Williams.
Okay.
And then you can go back to council.
All right, so this is order number 141, that was the order seeking approval for reciprocal easements with Brisco Village in connection with the sale of former Brisco School on Sawyer Road in Beverly, and we have City Solicitor Williams here to answer any of our questions. So let's maybe start with, do you have, does Councilor Copeland, do you have, does the committee have any questions? I-
Yes, I just want to get a better idea of, as far as the easements, what does that mean as far as the properties are impacted?
So an easement is, so we'll retain ownership, we're selling what's called lot B in paperwork, which is 20, it's four and a half and a five acres of property to the village, and that's where the new housing will be built, and-
Can I ask you for a minute?
Oh, I thought we were off.
Maybe you can go further up, I don't know.
So, it's just hard for me to hear them.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll speak.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, there's mics there.
So, obviously, we're selling that parcel because they have to build the housing, and then we're retaining ownership of the access drive, what's called the turf bowl in the city field, and an easement just gives Brisco Village a right to use those parcels, the access easement across the access drive, the turf bowl, and the city field during construction. They have a right to use it, subject to certain terms and conditions.
Okay.
So just as a reminder, a year ago, the City Council granted a special permit to, I'm going to go over the, go over the- Granted a special permit to Brisco Village after a public hearing, and the special permit contemplated the granting of all of these easements. So we view this as just the final step in approving the easement so that the sale can go forward.
Okay. Which means the sale's able to go forward, the city retains the rights to those properties, but they're allowed to use it through the easement.
I didn't hear the last thing you said.
But they're, but the organization's allowed to use it through those easements?
Yes, correct.
For the specified purposes?
Correct.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Sure. When you said that the, that the special permit was, the original special permit envisioned this-
Yeah.
This, took this into consideration, I guess I have a two-part question. One, is this kind of exactly what was envisioned, or were there any modifications? And two, are there any other additional parts of that original envision that have not been covered yet that will be coming up, like, further down the pike?
So the answer to your second question is we don't envision any changes.
Okay.
My memory is that these are the easements that were contemplated all along, and in fact, they were the easements contemplated when the City Council approved our request to sign the purchase and sale agreement. They were a little bit more general at that point in time, and the details were filled in by the time the special permit came before the City Council.
Okay, all right. So are there, I'd like to open it up to any questions from the Committee on the Whole? Good, good.
Yeah, I think the best thing to do would be to vote it out of committee.
Yeah, okay.
If you're comfortable with that approving it, I know the mayor wants to get this taken care of tonight, and then if Ms. Williams can hang around, this is the last thing on our agenda. If anybody else who's not currently in the room has any questions, we can take care of that.
Okay.
But it's just another step in the process that we've-
Yep. So I'd like to receive a motion to move, to vote this out of committee.
So moved.
Second motion, and, okay, we'll get out of committee. Motion to adjourn the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Did I say so moved, or?
Mm-hmm, so, yep.
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second that, and I will close that meeting, but not the-
Motion to-
Motion to-
Committee on the Whole.
Close the Committee on the Whole as well.
Second.
All right. So moved.
Yep.
Are we even a whole? There's only four of us.
Yeah, we're whole, there's somebody looking at-
Oh, okay. I was like, did this happen without me?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Nice work, guys.
Good job.
I just got off of a plane at like five o'clock, so I'm like, right, I'm like, what's going on?
I know, and I threw you into it, sorry.
Come on, I mean, I'm looking at my crystal ball, you're both chairing committees next time, so. Be ready.
Oh, man, it's a runaway train.
Well, you don't realize how-
The Committee on Legal Affairs, order number 134A, to whom refer the matter of Council Hausmann's rodent infestation issues and advice letter to city solicitor, have considered said matter and beg leave to follows. Receive and place on file.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
The Committee on Legal Affairs, order number 141, to whom was referred the matter from the mayor, approval for reciprocal easements with Brisco Village LLC in connection with the sale of former Brisco School on Sawyer Road.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Mayor Cahill or our city solicitor, Ms. Williams? Councilor Ames?
Yes, thanks. I do have a few questions. First, I was wondering, I wanted to have a conversation about parking a little bit. I was just saying out in the hallway that it looks like there are 10 spaces that will be deeded on, in the back parking lot adjacent to the back field, and that those are movable. Some places, it sort of sounds like that's mostly for people who are working, and so my first question is the language in here, what is a permitee? How do you define that? Because that's who says, who you say can, can park there.
So in my mind, it's the equivalent of an invitee, city invitee, so in other words, somebody who's there. It's the city field, and the 10 parking spaces are for the benefit of people using the city field, because we're selling the adjacent lot to Brisco Village, and as part of the deal, Brisco Village is agreeing to allow continued use of the 10 spaces in connection with the field. So it would be for individuals who are there for purposes of accessing the field, the public, really.
It's, so basically, residents of Beverly. So if somebody wants to walk around the field, or if there's a, if there are parents, you know, going to watch a game, and so it's 10 spaces, and this may not be a question for you, Solicitor Williams, but our, if we are talking about, the adjacent side streets are already pretty crowded, and I wanted to make sure, I wanted to have a good understanding of this parking, I think, along Colon Street, and just the overall idea, once this project goes in, there should probably be some economic revitalization in the adjacent residential and commercial area, and if we had a parking plan for when that happens, because I know those side streets are already insufficient for resident parking.
I don't know if you want to speak to it. I know this was all obviously reviewed in detail when the special permit was granted, and it went before, you know, the City Council spent, granted the special permit and all that, but mayor, if you want to speak to the side streets and any thoughts you may have about that.
Yes, thank you, Councilor. So first, with regards to the community accessing the field, we don't anticipate that there are going to be organized sports back there. There haven't been in a number of years. I think if you remember, there was, there was a need during the construction of the middle school turf field, or really the whole, the turf and the, and the grass field during the construction of those, there was a need for a couple of high school sports to go over there temporarily for a season. But we don't anticipate that moving forward, so those, and I'll say this, I would have preferred more spaces. At the same time, there's a need, both for residents, visitors, and then eventually we're hoping some active use of the, of the auditorium space. So, you know, the, the Beacon Harbor Light team taking, you know, title to the property, you're going to need, you know, need the lion's share of those spaces. So the 10 spaces we anticipate will be more than sufficient for, you know, just informal uses of the field. As far as adjacent zoned areas that are commercial and retail, you know, there are requirements for them in terms of parking. I'm not sure where you're looking for, you know, in, when you're thinking of additional redevelopment, and I would say again that, you know, the, if, if, if new proposals come forward in any of those parcels, they're going to have to be evaluated on their merits, and they're going to have to meet requirements that, for parking to come with that.
Thanks, that's fair enough. I'm thinking like Gloucester Crossing, and, you know, that entire intersection, one would think, would get a boost from this project for sure.
Hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
And all those side streets in and around there are all pretty congested as they sit. So that was it, that was there. And then just to bring us up to date, just in terms of any movement through the ZBA, the Planning Board, through the process, you know, is that all cleared and all ready to go?
Well, let me first give you the, the funding piece.
And that was-
Because there's several pieces to the financing of the project. The goal has been for, for us to close on the property with the Harbor Light Beacon team by first quarter of next year. They have gone through two processes. One is with Mass Historic Commission to get federal historic preservation grants. Another is going through the, the State Department of Housing and Community Development to get 9% low-income housing tax credits. So, so it's the historic tax credits, it's low-income housing tax credits. I believe that they are where they need to be with, with Mass Historic and with the historic tax credits, and I know that they have a pending application with DHCD. They, they applied last round, and they did not get those credits, but it's typically a get in line and wait, and, you know, and there were some, there were some questions asked and some, you know, strengthening of the application, which typically happens as well, and I know they're, they're waiting on a, on a current round of funding, which I believe they're hoping to hear by late summer, early fall, and, and if, if things come through as, as we all hope, then we're looking at a first quarter closing next year and a, and a construction groundbreaking by next summer. Their, their goal has been to get people living in, in Brisco by sometime in 2024.
Okay.
And, Madam Solicitor, you got a follow-up on permitting?
So, Councilor Ames, they have completed their permitting process, which I believe was only site plan review, and then the City Council granting the special permit, which is actually unusual, usually it is the ZBA, but in this case, it was the City Council because it's reuse of a public building. Was, were they in front of a concom at all, do you, I don't think they were. So I think that was it, but in any, in any event, they're done.
Okay, and so in terms of the dollars in to the city, that obviously the $10,000 deposits in, the $60,000 initial deposit, and the $75,000 additional deposit that was supposed to be paid within six months, is that correct? So that should all be-
Yeah. Are you referring to the purchase and sale agreement? They are current on the payments outlined in the purchase and sale agreement at this point in time.
And then finally, there's a 12/31/21 deadline, and do you, are we going to make that, or is there any? Excuse me?
For the closing?
Yeah.
So they hope, depending on funding rounds-
Okay.
-that we are going to be able to close this fall, and if not, then we can, by agreement, extend the closing date.
Okay, but we're not, we're, everybody is still good to go, there haven't been any hiccups, even though some of the first round was denied on one of the fund, funding sources, we're all, I just, you know, doing my due diligence here, Ms. I just, you know, doing my due diligence here, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, I, uh, great questions. I think when, every time I've talked with Mr. DeFranza for a couple of years, you know, he keeps talking first quarter 22. I think he's trying to manage his own and all of our expectations on the closing. I don't think there have been any hiccups with the financing pursuit, you know, of the two main sources of, of tax credits. I think it's, it's just a reality of the programs and the fact that there's always greater need, demand and need than there are resources. So, um, I, you know, I, I think they're in a good place. I know on the historic tax credit process, you know, we, we were in regular contact with the Secretary of State's office for a period of several months, um, on, on their behalf. I know Congressman Maltin's office, they were also very involved with the federal historic folks. So there's been a lot of that that's gone on. I've had some periodic contact with DHCD folks, but again, less, less necessary because that's a process that both Harbor Light and Beacon go through all the time. And, and so I, I think, as I said, I think they're in a good place.
That's great. And so my last is just a little bit of a comment. Over the last year and a half, um, as one would almost expect, I've had complaints about light, nuisance lighting, and noise before 7:00 AM, and a lot of truck noise and such, things like that, construction noise. So I would encourage us to be proactive with the neighbors so that they understand sort of what's coming, the good, the bad, and the ugly in terms of traffic, noise, and lighting.
Yeah.
And try to be respectful of all that. So if there's a way to communicate that back to Andrew and Beacon, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah, great point, great point. Yeah, and as you know, our, our start times for, for weekday construction are 7:00 AM and for any Saturday construction, and Sundays, I think, rarer, but Saturdays, not infrequently, those are 8:00 AM start times.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good, anybody else? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. And hats off to Council Feldman for hosting her first committee meeting, chairing her first committee meeting.
Thank you.
Great job, Council Feldman, Council Copeland. Ms. Kent, that's all we have tonight?
Oh.
Great, so unless we need to meet specially, our next City Council meeting will be September 13th at 7:00 PM. Does anybody else have anything to add? Council Ames?
Of course, it's me. Outside my home this weekend, we're a bunch of scouts. And I have a food drive on August 22nd from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Dane Street Church on behalf of Beverly Bootstrap, so anybody wants to bring, um, anything from peanut butter, mac and cheese, tuna fish, that would be greatly appreciated.
And it's outside of where?
Dane Street Church.
Great, thank you. Council Rotundo, anything from you?
No, I'm still on my computers.
All right.
Thanks for, you know, thanks for checking on me though.
You got it, and don't forget, it's, everybody watching at home, it's Homecoming this week. Check out BeverlyHomecoming.org for, uh, what's going on the next few days.
If the barbecue's on, it'll be a party.
I know, that's a new event, that's very good.
Yes, that and the, uh, street hockey event at, um, Falk Street Playground.
Good stuff.
On Saturday, so I did figure...
And we do have fireworks on Sunday.
We do?
Or Saturday.
Saturday.
Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday.
Good stuff. Thank you, Kim, in the booth, we always good to see you. Thanks for tuning in. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Good night, everybody. Nice work, everyone.